I call this committee at a whole meeting from Monday, June the 11th to order. First item is the adoption of the agenda recommendation committee at a whole adopts the June 11, 2018 agenda as presented. You have a move please. Counselor Tripp. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry on. Onto the minutes. Recommendation Committee at a whole adopts the May 7, 2018 committee of hold minutes as presented. Move please. Counselor Thompson. Discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Tripp.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Conrad. This is to do with the James Donaldson Park accessibility upgrades. And it's, uh, I'm not questioning the minutes at all, but I just was wondering if we could maybe get a comment or find out, um, will this work now be put on hold, seeing that the GFI is not going to be participating this year and that the public works have so many other projects on the go because of the flood?
Yeah, this wasn't... This proj... This project wasn't being done by public works. This was done, this was sponsorship by an independent contractor. And I have had a discussion with the man to see if this is going to proceed. So that's yet to be determined. But it doesn't involve city staff.
All right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carry. Uh, before I continue, my apologies. Counselor Crogg will not be attending today's meeting because he has personal matters to deal with. Moving on to registered petitions and delegations. First one is from Joanne Cook Kalani and representatives. Subject matter is request to consider conversion and redesignation of Vienna Woods property to an urban forest and wildlife sanctuary. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Conrad, council staff, and for our guests, I'm Joni Kosh-Kalanda. Do I need to?
Yes. It's for the cameras.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. Um, I'm not used, I'm a teacher, so I'm not used to talking on the microphone, so that's why I'm also, um, doing this, uh, wanted to stand. And I'm sorry, and thank you for this inaugural opportunity. Um, I would, uh, I stand before you again today as a 1972 GFSS alumni, a teacher and a self-proclaimed ambassador for this beautiful valley. I've been a teacher for 30 years and have earned my B. at UVIC and my master's at SFB in community building and literacy through the arts. So it might be a little bit different today. So if I may, I'd like to get my gallant assistant here as in cooperative learning to just pass out, um, pass out a little piece, because I, I feel I can empathize with all of you as a t, as a teacher. It seems like some of you have been getting a bad rap lately, and as teachers do at times. And so I would like to express that, I would like to acknowledge the intelligence within us all. This piece that is being passed out to you is by Howard Gardner, who's a, um, a theorist on, educational theorist on the multiple intelligences. So if you note on the first page, um, it gives you just an outline of the nine different ones. So I'd like you to flip over, please, and just have a look at the other ones on the side. And as you can see, there are many different kinds of intelligences. And so from within each of us, we all possess some of these. The theory is that the predominant intelligence comes to the surface and the others we continue to build on. So what I would like you to do is to con, to consider looking at which ones you're a part of, and, um, also ask you to stretch your thinking to the naturalist intelligence down there at the bottom, which is what we are going to refer to when I, when we speak about, um, the forest. Can you imagine going on a nature walk with your grandchildren and great-grandchildren amidst the old growth wonder of ponderosa pines of the Vienna Woods? The last of a unique dryland ecosystem and home to dozens of species of birds. And you are proudly sharing that you are a part of this vision, especially poignant with Earth Day celebrations a few weeks ago. You may be thinking about the possibilities of holding such profound events right here. Using conceptual thinking to see the big picture and paying attention to the details will help this vision become reality. This is how I, as a teacher, have been encouraging with students, youth, and colleagues for decades. Many of those I taught are now parents and grandparents, the voting public, if you will, and they have a vital interest in preserving the legacy for future generations. If I may again, please have my gallant assistant ready to pass out the booklet. So I was just referencing a letter that I had sent to all of you via email on May 22nd, which was entitled "The Information Submitted At Request of Council of the Whole," May 7. In this package, kind of think of it as an acoustic presentation, um, rather than a digital one, because, um, I remember I was, uh, started teaching in 1975 and I was using the Gestetner for copying things. So the, so I've come a long way myself, so I'm learning a lot myself at this. So in this package, which you're welcome to, to keep and will reference as kind of a textbook, um, or I can send it to you via email if you prefer that afterwards.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds?
We only have ten minutes.
Oh. Thank you. All right. So I'm, I'm standing strong. I'm for restoration, preservation, and conservation of the Vienna Woods, um, on behalf of concerned educators, youth, and citizens. So I'm, in the youth, in the educators department, um, I have been working with the Global Citizenship Club, the teachers with the Global Citizen.
Unfortunately, your time is up. Sorry. Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Ten minutes. Okay, then you have five minutes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes, I, I know it's very, it's very, very quickly. Um, so I just wanted to let you know who the educators I'm working with are the teachers from the Global Citizenship Club of Grand Fork Secondary School, with some teachers in our sister cities in Assoias, in Pen Ticton, and in Oliver. And we're connecting with the students, the youth of the schools here to work on this as well. The concerned citizens, uh, excuse me, are some are with me today. Um, others are, we have a petition of about a thousand people online and handwritten that have indicated their concern as well. So, um, I'm representing a lot of people, so I'm trying to do the best I can. And I'm sorry that Mondays are not the best day for me either, but... Um, so if you could, please just reference, um, page, the presentation, of course, is about the importance of preserving this, um, this area. On page, on page, um, sorry. In the, page three, the third page, which says "The Momentum Protecting Vienna Woods Pine Forest Gains Momentum," which is an article that was published in the, in the Boundary Sentinel, and it explains to you there how it has drawn a lot of, um, interest, and there's a thousand signatures and many Facebook readers. If you flip over to the next page, um, there's a section on protecting the natural environment, and there are references of the articles and substantiating the principles, which are guiding principle outlined in the Grand Fork Sustainable Community Plan to Protect the Natural Environment. If we carry on, um, there's the next section is the protection of the natural environment. Again, some references with regard to the remnant brass lands, the endangered species, and, um, the red-listed clover. Um, there's also wildlife preservation efforts with, um, underway with the federal and provincial level and with the U.C. Union of Municipalities. And if you will note, please, on that page, uh, wildlife preservation efforts, um, there is a, a quote, there's a lot of quotes throughout this article, and it is by Jasper Lament from the Nature Trust, B.C., and he says, "I am pleased to hear that you are engaging Grand Forks High School students in a dialogue around the need for land conservation for the Boundary Region and across B.C." Grand Forks is where the Nature Trust, B.C., acquired its first conservation lands way back in 1972. The parents of GFSS students may not have even been born then. So we have a lot of support and recognition and contact with various organizations and, um, and mentors across the land. Um, the next is again, one on the Boundary Sentinel, are an article by biologist Jenny Coleshill, uh, where it says, "Summing it up, Grand Forks Council rocks, talks, and save the birds." She has indicated that the Lewis woodpecker is an endangered species in the, in the Boundary, and she had left a copy of the Green Bylaw Toolkit with you. Speaking of toolkits, the following one is on planting our future, a toolkit for communities, which I have extra copies of as well for anyone who's, who is interested in it. And the values and the benefits are stated here. It's actually an excellent, excellent resource for many things, um, which was presented in 2008, Union of B.C. Municipalities. The values and the benefits. Carefully designed and well-managed tree environments can play a significant role in creating livable and sustainable communities that attract and retain business and workers. For every dollar spent on them, trees give back $2, $2.5 in benefits to protect the community. A healthy urban forest is one of the only municipal capital investments that will appreciate in value over time. And in the bottom right-hand corner over there, too, it, um, says the environmental benefits that support biodiversity, providing food and shelter for a variety of birds and other wildlife. Some tree ecosystems provide habitats for species at risk, such as the Lewis woodpecker nesting in the city park in Grand Forks. And, and on, on it goes. Then, the, um, the page where we are standing strong for the Vienna Woods, um, in the upper right-hand corner of the, um, expression of interest, copy. At the May 7, 2018 council meeting, two councillors revealed that they are currently in discussion and negotiations with a business interest to sell 6.13 acres of Vienna Woods that was advertised for sale in the Grand Forks Gazette. An option had been presented earlier by Mr. Gene Cook through an expression of interest requesting the council honor the 2004 motion in council to preserve all of Vienna Woods. Only some councillors were respectful and seemed to be considering this option. Others appeared to be strongly opposed.
Are you much longer, Ms. Conrad? Is your timing definitely up now?
Is it, may I have a couple more minutes?
Unfortunately, we can't do that. Otherwise, it set a precedent for other...
You're doing questions, period.
We, it's been filed, we'll file your request.
And, can I just make my last statement? Please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. How do we turn this one? Just push that gray button to talk.
Um, my, the, the people that I'm representing have asked me to, uh, get you to refer to section 3.414 of the Grand Forks Sustainable Plan. And just to help you, remind you that we are a self-organized community group mobilized to stand strong for Vienna Woods. You can count on our persistence, our determination, and our tenacity. This is a very precious forest with many, many benefits for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Any discussion, otherwise we'll move on to the next one. Go ahead, Counselor Trump.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Um, thank you, Joni, for bringing this report forward. You've obviously done a lot of work, and I can really see that here. And, um, I understand and get very much and hear very clearly that you are speaking for many residents in the community, young people, and others even outside of our area who are looking to Grand Forks to, uh, see that council be responsible for the natural assets that we have. I've heard you. I thank you very much for this report, and I definitely will be looking over that information. Thank you.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo as well what Counselor Tripp said, and thank you for your presentation. Yeah, it's too bad you didn't have more time to go through it slower, because you have put a lot of work into it, and I think we've all seen the effects of deforestation in our watershed over the last few weeks with the flooding and how important it is that we protect the natural areas that we have within our city and outside of our city. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, um, I'm not in agreement with the other two councillors, and I have to say this is the second presentation that we've heard from you. Um, and I appreciate all the work that you've done to put into this, but this is like the fourth or fifth time that it's been discussed either by your brother Gene Cook or yourself. And every time you ask questions, you're given answers by the city or the council, but it seems like you're not prepared to listen to what the council or the city staff have to say. There has been a biologist, environmental biologist employed for the past three or four months. It's ongoing. There is no, um, endangered species or nesting owls in that property. You wouldn't want to take kids through there, because it's a danger for trees falling. Um, the person, the percentage of trees that are actually on city land is probably less than 20% of the entire Vienna Woods, which belongs to School District 51. So I'm a little frustrated and weary that it keeps coming back and misinformation keeps getting put out there, um, to make the community feel that there's, there's something happening that isn't. All environmental measures have been taken and are still being taken, and, and those have all been addressed, and they've been addressed numerous times at each of these meetings. So, thank you.
I have one quick comment. Thank you for your report, your presentation. I hope you didn't have more time. But having said that, again, everything has been addressed. There are subject twos on the sale of this property. Everything has been addressed. And I find it very disturbing that this type of presentation has to be brought over and over again, especially at a time like this when we are dealing with more severe issues in this community, which is the flooding and the citizens impacted by this. But thank you.
One more.
Counselor Hammond.
Um, yeah, and so especially at a time like this, when we have so much infrastructure to rebuild, um, and we have to show positive growth in Grand Forks. This is city land, and I understand your brother lives a couple hundred meters from that, although he's in regional district and probably doesn't want the industry there. But we need that industrial tax base. Otherwise, we're going to have to put up residential tax bases. So we need to encourage, it's encouraging to see that we have developers coming into Grand Forks that want to invest here, that have confidence in Grand Forks, that are going to provide jobs, and it's going to reduce the burden of tax to the residents. But we cannot keep chasing away developers who want to bring us jobs and, and money. That's, that's my point. We have to grow. We can't, we can't just keep standing still.
Counselor Butler.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. No, I, I completely have understood what you have said in the past, and in my, as a conscientious observer at these meet, of these meetings, and I, I really do value what you have to say, and also I appreciate that you have given these great reassurances. What we are, as a, as a group, are looking at is a guarantee, and also that you can, it's possible to do both, right? There are other properties available for, for the purchaser, are there not? And save this, and work on, on the nature park aspect, the, um, even into an interpretive forest for the place-based learning that is required in the new curriculum, the indigenous perspectives. In the new, in the new curriculum, it, it is, it's like a perfect place to do that and then also combine the school board to get them together, so we have 12 acres there about of that instead of, instead of reducing, reacting. And I just think that it's possible in my, I mean, I, I again have done huge amounts of research and with the people who have been supporting this, and we need time...
Ms. Butler, with all due respect, you're elaborating again back to your delegation. We, we just, you needed to respond to Counselor Hammond. That was it. Thank you.
Did I, was that, did I answer that okay? And, and also, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have, um, ha, talked with you for, further about this. My phone number is on, on the, um, outline there and also my email, so...
Let me just reiterate again. Really bad timing. Counselor Thompson.
You have to turn yourself off. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, I was made aware late last week that an invitation had been extended to residents in the, uh, Area D to attend today's meeting in support of your, of your cause. Um, I didn't receive one in my mailbox, and I live in the city, so was that just a selective, uh, group that received that invitation, or was it, um, throughout Grand Forks, uh, the city and the Area D?
Um, no, it was, it for the city and, and whatever, it was some flyers throughout, and it was to encourage people for their awareness, um, just as, as the Grand Forks Senior Secondary Global Citizenship Club work on the, uh, awareness and fundraising possibilities for passion groups within that. So it was just, it was to allow people to help, to help people become aware that this made, because what we've noticed is that there hadn't been a lot of people. And we had actually started this a long time ago, right? So I know, and, um, so the timing, I totally, completely understand, but this is where the city is pulling together. This is where it's showing our resilience, is to incorporate all of these different areas.
Counselor Butler and Counselor Ross.
She has spoken, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. I do enjoy people's passion and activism for something as important as preserving nature. And, uh, I have talked to Fred Marshall about it, and it is not an old growth forest. It's mature stand now. It hasn't, it's been, it's been logged, and these are old growth trees. It's not, it's not old growth. According to Fred Marshall, it's not old growth. It is, there are, it's mature trees. The trees that are about 100 years old, he said. And he's a forester, and I believe Fred Marshall. Uh, recently, and I think Grand Forks, especially since we've been in council, we've done an amazing job of preserving and protecting wetlands and wild spaces throughout our city. And we have, um, through staff support and the initiative of this council, been very cognizant of those wildlife corridors throughout our city, protecting, um, uh, wetlands and just creating, um, nature, nature walks and spaces throughout our city. And when you live here and you ride your bike through here, watch through here, I love it. I can go, I live up, I live in Area D. I can ride my bike from my place and never hit the highway. I'm just taking little trails through new woods throughout until I can get to City Hall. And I think that's, makes Grand Forks particularly precious. Um, yesterday, I spent the day up in North Fork, walking through forests and in the snow, and, you know, we live so close to within and just outside, um, our city, incredible pristine nature. I, I was working, um, about a month ago, um, with, uh, we did a nature walk with some high school students, with Graham, and, um, and, uh, we went up, up the Observation Mountain and through some wetlands and through some forests, in the city, and we stopped and talked with the kids and looked at various species and scat and, and fundy and mycelium and all kinds of wonderful things and rock formations that we have right here in our city already. I understand your passion, and, and I know that the person who's looking at this is also passionate about the trees and about our, and about the natural environment that potentially, um, you know, will be developed into an employment and an ethical business here. And I think, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not a Walmart. It's not going to get paved over. It's not going to be Canadian Tire. It's going to be something that is developed in respect for the surrounding area. And this is, it is a conundrum. It is for sure a conundrum, but it's sort of the best of both worlds, and, I mean, it's always been city land. It's zoned industrial, and somebody's come in and showed an, an, an interest in it. And just talking to people who are now being impacted, and businesses are closed down here, and people have lost their jobs and his potential employment that we desperately need for young families here. So I, I totally understand, and I've been where you are, but can I just guarantee, just help you understand that this is, this is being done in a way that is respectful of this mature forest? And we are doing our best in our city to bring kids out to the nature, in nature that is already existing here, and we're continuing, continuing to foster that ethic within our policies and our behavior as a city and a city council.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Um, I, I really value and appreciate you also acknowledging my passion, and just as I, to you all, am appreciative, um, of the limited interactions we have had, like Ms. Counselor Hammond, especially that last time after we talked after that meeting, and you were willing to talk to me about your, the ecotourism, um, opportunities that you've worked on, and I, I really value that, what I, again, see as a, as a conscientious observer, that you are doing as a council, and that's why I said in the beginning, I can empathize with, with you all, actually. And also, um, Counselor Butler, I was, again, in my observation and what you have done with the, with the youth, youth engagement, you're, um, interested in being able to do that, and, and, uh, Counselor Tripp, especially when you, um, try, um, valued the questions that I brought forward from the Grand Forks Secondary students, and presented an opportunity for the council to take a look at incorporating some of those into actual policy, and, and how that would show the students that their voices are being heard, right? So, and, and Counselor Thompson, uh, you made me feel so welcome when we, when we, um, when I, when I came. We came up the stairs that time together, and, and Counselor Ross, I'm sorry that I didn't, we weren't here that, that last time I was here, but I can, I'm really grateful that you have acknowledged and recognized this passion as well. And Mayor, Mayor Conrad, I am extremely grateful to you for, um, last time and this time for respecting my professionalism as well. It seems that, that you really value, um, you know, organization and, um, and preparation and professionalism. So thank you very much. I, I, please know that I see that, and all of the people that are working on this, citizens, youth, and, um, family, um, see that, too. So we respect and, and honor what you are doing. We just hope that, and we do see, we to, we completely do see, we just think that there's also opportunity for both, you know, to, to do both. And if there is, and, and there is other opportunities for, that are other land available for the purchaser, that might be as, as good. But again, I trust that you, that you know what you're doing. So, thank you.
Counselor Butler, and then I'm here to assist one. I think it's not fair to the rest of the delegations here.
Yeah, just a, a quick comment or a question. Um, the presenters recommended land swats or other lands available, and I'm just a question to staff, to our land development staff, that they got up on the screen here the Vienna Woods, and then there's a pie-shaped piece of land that's already been clear cut. Is that a land that could be, um, appropriate or available for sale?
I can speak, uh, through the mayor, uh, just briefly, I put this up on screen so we could clarify the property in question and the Vienna Woods as a whole. So this is the land that was advertised for sale and is subject to the discussion in camera relating to, uh, land development questions. Uh, overall, there's three properties, uh, which have, or four properties, and two owned by the city, one held privately, and then the school district owns this property, and the RDKB owns this one, as well as the, uh, the Langway, I guess is the administrative station. So this is the area that has the tallest and most intact stand, and then, uh, the airport east kind of property over here has a small remnant stand on it with some intact forest boundaries. Uh, so the area in, in here, this is, um, this was 2012, this photo. Um, there was an extensive, uh, mountain pine beetle outbreak in the area, um, and at various times over the last few years, it's basically, this is the most recent photo, so property line's right about here. It's a sparse and, and falling down essentially forest. And, uh, the area that's on the west... And the area that's on the west side of the property in particular is suitable for development. There's, I think, a desire on the part of the developer to incorporate buffer areas and ensure that, you know, remnant forest values to the east are protected. And essentially, this is the ideal configuration for.
So, Pastor Ward, Mr. Smith, that wasn't my question. I was asking about the pie-shaped piece of land that's been clear cut. Is that available for sale?
It is, but it is essentially landlocked because it doesn't have industrial access to it. And we wouldn't have industrial traffic going through a residential area. So it would be much more difficult for us to service that lot with road.
Okay. Again, thank you. And we're going to move on to our next delegation. Next item on the delegation list is Jerry Foster with a request for an honor in memory of Hall of Fame hockey player Duncan McMillan McKee McKay, whose career and life were a part of Grand Forks. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, Jerry.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present this to you. And I'll be brief as I can. Let me just say before I get into this, I asked for a place on the agenda before our disaster in Grand Forks. And I appreciate that probably a lot more important things to deal with than this. But yet, in terms of the history of this community and in what we're going through now, I think this can help to lift our spirits. I'm also grateful to the mayor, to the council, the city workers, for all that you have done, for all that you are going through. I would just add, apart from this, if you're wondering and you want to learn some things about whether what politicians go through during a disaster, city workers, community people, are namesake in Grand Forks, North Dakota. Books have been written on it, articles, 1997, Grand Forks, North Dakota, and East Grand Forks, Minnesota. You'd learn a lot, all of us would, if we just took the time to maybe tap into how they went through their huge disaster. Your worship, Mayor Conrad, and members of council. I'm here, I say on behalf of the residents of Grand Forks with respect to an important and fascinating part of Grand Forks history. However, this is my own initiative. And there's another hand, though, of course, that I'm not going to get into. Same time, it's what I wrote four years ago after spending about 120 hours researching the history of hockey at Grand Forks, something that was never uncovered, really. And then I came across one player. So my purpose is to request the long overdue honor in memory of Duncan McMillan McKee McKay. I believe that recognizing this remarkable athlete is not only long overdue, but will serve to establish for all time an important part of our local history, specifically one of our city's finest athletes. The day after his death, leading newspapers across Canada. This was 1940, no internet, no email, no texting. From Calgary to Montreal displayed headlines, front page headlines announcing his death. The Calgary Herald contained these words, "Mickey's death wrote fini" to the career of one of hockey's immortals. My suggestion would be to consider something near or around the arena. One suggestion is to name the lane which runs through the rec center from 19th Street to 21st Street, Mickey McKay Lane. Or another option, as someone suggested, bear in mind, I have already met with the Recreation Commission, Counselor Butler was at that meeting, to name a recreation center area Mickey McKay Place. The cost would not be too great, consisting mainly of one or hopefully two signs, one at each end of the lane, also a plaque for inside the arena. And I'm quite prepared to pay for the plaque, have it designed, and I'd be honored to do that. So that wouldn't be a cost for the city, only the signs and the time to erect the signs. Not only would this pay tribute to one of our outstanding athletes, but would serve to inform others of a special part of this community's history. In addition, this story would resonate with many tourists who visit us each year. Visitors would remember Grand Forks as the place where one of the finest centermen the game ever produced called home. In addition, we have many young hockey players in the Grand Forks Minor Hockey Association. And of course, it would serve as an inspiration to them for years to come. And obviously, this would be very, very meaningful to players and coaches of our Grand Forks Board of Bruins Junior Hockey Team. In conclusion, I would ask that the council adopt a resolution to proceed with this request. It would be prudent and appropriate to make a decision soon. My suggestion would be to hold an appropriate ceremony in September of this year, an early start to the hockey season. And I would be pleased to do the necessary planning and publicity for a simple but meaningful ceremony once the date is set. It's a great story. Some of you have read it. Four years ago, I wrote the history of Grand Forks. When I came across Mickey McKay, I had read a separate article. The Grand Forks Gazette reprinted the articles a year later, so about three years ago or so. And Mickey McKay married the postmaster, postmistress, if you like, from Grand Forks. And that's what brought him back, and this became his hometown. He was born in Ontario. They're both buried here in Evergreen Cemetery, a place, as you know, with my profession, retired minister now. I spent many, many hours at that cemetery with families over the years, burials and memorial services and committals. I was there the other day because a family from Vancouver asked me to go and take some photos of their loved ones, of, you know, the markers. And I went over to Mickey's grave. And I had tears in my eyes when I said, Mickey, I'm sorry this has taken so long, or they think it's going to happen. I don't know if you have any questions, but thanks so much for your time and your support.
Thank you, Jerry. Counselor Butler.
Thanks again, Jerry, for the presentation. I liked hearing the story when you presented it at the Rec Commission, and it's here in our notes to read. And hopefully, people online will take the time to read it as well. I think it'd be an excellent project for Grand Forks, and I know the Rec Commission was fully behind you on it. At this point, I think all you're asking for is for the city to add this to an upcoming agenda for approval, for the project to move forward. And as I understand it, you said that you would provide the plaque and the advertising for the event. To designate it as a laneway, would you be asking the city for some type of signpost or laneway marker? And I'm just wondering, through staff, if that's something that we're able to do or if we need approval from highways?
Of course you do.
Thanks, your worship. So we would have to determine exactly which laneway it is. I know there's a lane in there that people use, but it's not a designated road. And so if that's the one that the reference is to, in order to name a road, we would actually have to get it surveyed to make it a road before we can put anything on it. So, you know, it's something that can be done. It's like, you know, it's not horribly expensive, but it's like you're going to be in the line of some of the other projects that we have to have ahead of us. But if that's something that council would like to stop to look into, that would be another thing. The second part is, is that the recreational centers, I think that the process will not be much like how the renaming of the arena was done to honor Mr. Goddard. And of course, it's a regional district piece. And I think the piece that council had in there was to provide a resolution saying that they were in favor of having the, I think in this case, the recreational center renamed as this, and it would go to the regional district. And then their process would be done the same way as it would have been for the Goddard.
Just a quick question. The present laneway, if I understand it, which is between your arena and your curling ring, does it have a designated name at this point? If not, the reason I ask this question is because you were saying that it would have to be called as a road. Why could it not just be, if it does not have a designation, why could it just not be called Mickey McKay Lane? And then it doesn't have to be designated as a road, just call it Mickey McKay Lane? If that would suffice, or would you like?
That's all he's asking for.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be probably a simple procedure. You are planning to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Through the mayor, I should point out as well, it could be, it's entirely on regional district land, essentially, once you get onto the parking lot through, from 19th through to 21st. And so it would be essentially naming a lane on, a private lane, in essence, on the regional district land. So I think we can discuss the signage, but perhaps refer back to the Recreation Commission for, you know, an unofficial dedication on their land.
Or maybe it could be brought to the board table. And we go to the board for, possibly, Jerry, you could do the same presentation at a board meeting at regional, and then we could collaboratively work on this. It's already done?
Yes, and there seemed to be very support. I think Counselor Butler realized that, you know, sitting on that committee.
On the Rec.
I also, it was recommended that I come. And even without the recommendation, I sure would want, wouldn't want to move forward or something like this if I had the city of Grand Forks behind me, as well as the regional district.
You had spoken to me about it previously already. And yeah, so then I guess the simple procedure would be to probably talk about this at the next board meeting or with the board. And then we could collaboratively work on this together.
Thank you so much.
R and K B. But I think the simple concept would be, if that meets your who, it would be Mickey McKay Lane. Counselor Thompson.
Well, thank you. Mickey McKay's widow, Ann, was a good friend of mine.
No way.
We were, yeah. Yeah, we worked, we're both in the Business Women's Club. And I do know that they had a daughter, but her name escapes me. And I just wondered if there would be an appetite to make contact with her or her children, if she had children, with respect to this.
Closest I could find of all the hours I spent was a nephew. And when I spoke to the nephew very elderly, I knew more than he did. And I got some information. It's, so that's, I pursued it so that when I was writing the story, the history of hockey in this community, and for sure. And I just, the trails just led to nowhere except this one nephew. And after a brief conversation, I was, again, I probably knew more than he did.
And I'm surprised that he wouldn't mention his cousin, because that would be.
And I suspect perhaps, as I say, he was quite elderly. And I'm sure that with, you know, memory challenges, that's probably why. But I would love to have, you know, he's in the NHL Hockey Fame. He's in the B C Sports Hall of Fame. He's in the B C Hockey Hall of Fame. He's in the Boston Bruins Hockey Fame. He won two Stanley Cups. He was on the winning Vancouver Millionaires team with the great Cyclone Taylor. I should just slip this in. I may need your support in something else. I am trying to get the K I J H L, one of the finest junior B leagues in Canada, to actually name, they do not have a name on their trophy, the team that wins the trophy each year. Cyclone Taylor, the trophy goes to the winner of the Junior B Championship in B C. And I've written a letter to someone. I can't go too far in this, but I was very disappointed. I did not even get a reply. And I think I'm going to pursue this. It's a no-brainer to me that it should be named after Mickey as well. And, but that's another issue that I'm kind of working on the side. It's marvelous. He played in seven Stanley Cup Finals, actually, in his career. The fact that he came back, he said, this is my new hometown. He operated an ice cream store and confectioner in the summers and the offseason. And when he retired from hockey here and came back, he coached kids and he refereed and he was part of the community. I kept asking why it was a book not written on him. And then I, my answer came when he died suddenly in 1940, when he was into mining over a while, I read the story. And, but it's, it's an wonderful story. I still actually get moved by it four years later since I wrote it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Bearing none. Great pursuit, Jerry.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Interesting, and we will continue this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, moving on to our next delegation, which is the Boundary Museum Society. Subject matter is a quarterly report in compliance with the 2018 Fee for Service Agreement. Good morning, Kim Law.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm just gonna set on the screen. I'm just gonna sort of read it while you pull it along. Okay. Mandated the Boundary Museum Society. Thank you. Mandated the Boundary Museum Society is to collect research and exhibit and use for educational purposes artifacts, archives, and photographs relating to human and natural history of the Grand Forks and Boundary area. We just had our new R and K G M last week. And the new board is myself, Leader Joseph is president, Bob McTavish, vice president, Kathy Rush, treasurer, Monica Colseal, secretary, Laura Loder, Joan Tetanglio, and Sam Semenoff are all three directors. And I would like to begin our report with a big thank you to the city council for the money, the $10,000 that you gave us for our annual stipend. That, that is very, very kind of you, and we really, really appreciate it because it may us be able to hire somebody, another person to our staff. And that, we are pleased to announce that we have hired Bronwyn Bird, an extremely qualified person to our team. We have many plans for the future, and she has already proven to handle this transition. Her knowledge of the museum rules and regulations on organizing and handling artifacts makes her a perfect fit. We are now open six days a week, including Sundays. And I think that will help us with our funding as well. We've gotten off to a slow start this year in attendance, but hopefully, this will improve now that summer is upon us. We have taken your advice and we're charging a fee, and it is working out quite well. Funding for the first five months of 2018, we have kept busy. We've applied for a grant with Area C to upgrade our office. And we received $4,000 from Area C to do so. And we need to purchase another computer, shelving, two office chairs, and an area rug and a printer, if funds can allow. Thank you to Area C for their support in our office and improve its functionality. We have also received word that the Grand Forks River League Club will be supporting the Boundary Museum in 2019. We have chosen the Boundary Museum to receive the funds raised at their annual Monster Fest event and West Jet Draw. These funds are earmarked for the construction of the 40 by 60 addition to our existing 40 by 40 Black Hawk livery building. In June, we will be putting on Summer Flame fundraiser along with the Grand Forks Fire Department to raise funds for this addition as well. And we have applied to the regional district to put in Boundary. And we did receive the $60,000 that we asked for for phase one of the building addition. And that will just cover putting in the foundation and stuff like that. So we have another grant that we are applying for to go to first stage two as well. So we've been doing pretty good. Our next grant will be going out shortly for the second phase. And hopefully, that we can be successful in that one as well. We've had a couple workshops to clear out our 40 by 40. We've had a couple workshops to clear out our 40 by 40 building so that we can open it to the public and it will be done, it'll be open within the next couple weeks, I'm assuming.
Right.
Okay, now I'm gonna hand it over to Jerry. Hello?
We went to look at this and so we have had a few articles published in the Gazette. Now that we have more staff, we would like to do one on a monthly basis, providing the Gazette has the space to do so. So we submit and then the Gazette decides when they want to put it in. Canada Summer Jobs Funding. We received approval for two summer students for a total of eight weeks for each student. Last year, we had two students for nine weeks. So there will be, there continues to be a drop in the funding from what I gather, it used to be 12 weeks. Young Canada Works Fund application. We received one summer student for the collection management project for 12 weeks and our Young Canada Works summer student began on May the 15th and she's been added to our team and that is Vanessa Pavant, some of you might know her. She's a local girl. We are happy to have her on board. The Phoenix Foundation of the Boundary Communities 2017 Grant Application. We received sort of a refurbished computer from the Grand Forks Credit Union as they were sitting at the table, they said they could help us out with that. Aboriginal Education Program. We have the Sinaics, oh, sorry, I get a little nervous. We have the Sinaics, lake people, they were featured, they were featured in research from Joan Hart's presentation and display at the museum. School District 51's Aboriginal Coordinator, Wanda Hekt, has been involved with the school program and with Joan Hart's Frog Mountain Storytelling and Seasonal Changes. We have been holding, we will be holding a book signing on, sorry, I lost my place. On June the 16th, that's this Saturday, from noon to 3:00 PM. The presentation is with Marilyn James, her Corrections and Creation Stories of the Sinaics. We have had, received grant funding from the BC Multiculturalism Grant for 2,500 and we are in the process of building an exhibit to be completed this fall. I would like to personally invite everyone here, the mayor and all council to show up this Saturday up at the Boundary Museum. We do have the book signing with Marilyn James, it's a great opportunity to meet one of the elders of the Sinaics. We have completed our five-year plan and a copy of which has been enclosed for you guys. We are also including our Constitution and Bylaws, which was rewritten early spring. And the five-year plan, we're still working on the budget, but that'll be put into place. It's what you call a work in process. Our future looks really bright. We continue to strive to keep, to strive to keep our displays fresh and ever-changing to attract people from far and wide to visit our great venue. In conclusion, the Boundary Museum Society is seeking a recommendation from the City of Council at the Committee of Hope meeting to receive the quarterly report for the period ending May the 31st, 2018, under the terms of the 2018 fee for service agreement.
And I have one thing to say. We are very proud of our staff and our board members who have worked so hard and worked so well together to make the museum the best it can be. Okay? We're an excellent team, actually. We've got a good one right now, so. Very happy and we're pulling our foot.
Thank you. And you have a minute to spare.
Yeah. Oh my God, yes.
Councillor Trigg.
Thank you, Mayor Clonan, I'll take that minute. Thank you for that report, it's great. You guys are doing fantastic work and I really was interested in your five-year strategic plan. A couple of questions I had on that. You have plans to relocate the Gyro Park outdoor exhibits to the Boundary Museum grounds. I'm wondering, are you expecting those to go up there when you get this new venue built, the new building built? Or will it go into something existing and when might that be? And then the other question, you have, you conduct visitor surveys for program development and I just was wondering if you'd started that, if you had any feedback yet.
Okay, we, you can, the last question you didn't answer. Yeah, but the gyro display, we've talked about doing that and we've got, we're not really sure. We've had dialogue with the city and I think the city wants some of that moved, so we're, if it has to be undercover, if we have to wait till that building is done. Otherwise, if it doesn't, we can, we've got other space up there that we can move it to and make a show for it.
Yeah. And was that imminent or within the next year or?
We're not quite sure. All depends when the building can be completed. Like we're just gonna start phase one and that's gonna be the, just the foundation. So now we have to find grant, the grant money for the stage two as well, which of course we're working on next week. And then it'll probably be, we're hoping it to be within a year, maybe two, so we're not quite sure. Okay? Thank you.
Councillor Ross.
And the second part of the question about the surveys?
Okay, the surveys. We haven't started yet, but I know one of the things that we're gonna put into place is an evaluation from events. So we're just, actually have had a wedding this last weekend. I'm asking them to do an evaluation so that we can fine tune how we perform and then of course a survey will be done hopefully within the next few months so we can start surveying people and finding out what will work better, but we just have to put together that document.
Thank you.
Councillor Ross.
Thank you. The Boundary Museum is a nice little gem. I just had friends from Norway here and I sent them over to have a look and they loved it. I liked the, I liked the display in Gyro Park because I like, I think it's important that our history is spread out throughout the city and not just sequestered out, you know, in the, at the museum. We do have strong agricultural roots here and sometimes we forget. So I'm just, when I read that, I was hoping that all of that wasn't going to be moved, that it's almost like a teaser. I would have liked it to actually be more front and center in the park so it would attract more people to go over there and be curious about it, get a little taste for it, go over to the gallery and then manure up to the Boundary Museum. So I think it's really important that some of that history does stay downtown.
Okay, that's a dialogue we can work with and yes.
Do you understand what I'm saying though?
Yes, I do, yes. And we'll talk with the board and we can definitely...
It's like leaving a trail of crumbs.
Yes, that's, that's a good idea and yes.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Ross on that too. As long as there's no risk of vandalism down there, I know it's behind screens, but I don't know if you're having trouble with vandalism, so that's obviously a consideration. Last time you were here, we had talked about the schools, the school classes coming through, especially for the native education. And at that time, I believe you said that you weren't receiving any funding from School District 51 for the educational opportunities that you were providing and I'm just wondering if you've had any conversations with them about that.
They pay $50 per group, the school district pays that every time a school group comes up, but that's, that's what we get. So we continue to get that. We also have kindergarten grad going on this next month, it's pretty cool.
And one more thing about, one more thing about Gyro Park. We did have a signage up there saying Boundary Museum, but it, apparently it's not there anymore. We were wondering what happened to it. Does anybody know?
Gyro Park. Where was the sign?
It was at Gyro Park where our stuff is and it, it was, there was a sign, a signage there that said it belonged to the Boundary Museum, but it's not there anymore.
Wow, that's like, I think there should be more signs.
Yeah, yes. And so, yeah, so people don't know where it's come from, so.
Right, that's important.
Yeah.
Thank you. Something to follow.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Thank you once again for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Don't forget Saturday.
What time, noon?
Noon to 3:00.
Yes, please come and see us up there and see what's going on.
Okay, moving on to item five, which is regional topics for discussion with Area D. Unfortunately Director Russell has informed me that he will not be present today and some of the subject matters I will be discussing on my report this evening because he has emailed me a couple of comments on those two items regarding the food and agricultural plan and also the Boundary Trails master plan. So now we will move on to our next item, which is 6A, presentation from staff. Subject matter cannabis zoning amendment from Development Engineering Services. The recommendation Committee of Hope receives a memorandum from Development Engineering Services regarding the cannabis zoning amendment for information and further asks staff to include the proposed changes in the proposed amendment bylaw number 2039-a1 for third reading. Over please. Councillor Thompson. Kate, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clonan, through the mayor. So the memo, this is kind of a long-term thing in process and it got pushed a little bit back by the flood of course, but with the legalization scheduled proceeding, staff wanted to make sure that we're on track to do the, both the required and the supplemental public outreach and that kind of thing on the cannabis of the bylaw. So first and second readings happen on April 23rd and then staff at that time said there would be an open house opportunity. So what we proposed, you know, given the compressed council schedule in the summertime is to go through open house and public hearing this, this spring essentially in June during early summer and then complete the bylaw process in July. So that left a window of basically June 18th for an open house and a public hearing. And Mr. Kevin Gates and I will be working on the electronic paper in-person submissions of looking at having a kiosk downstairs during the open house so people can provide feedback and then we can bring forward any suggested changes prior to the third reading and have the bylaw discussion on the, on the 25th. So during the flood and the early recovery here, there was discussion about having more opportunity to open up some of the changes in the zoning bylaw for having manufactured or mobile homes on some of the flood-affected areas for rapid rebuilding. And so we've drafted some initial and I'll just draw attention to them on. One second. Here we go.
Are we on to the next memo?
So, so what we, what we wanted to do was identify some potential additions to this bylaw. So this is the bylaw 2039-1, you know, the first parts of it deal with the cannabis retail and processing overlays as presented in April. The second part's part C, D, and E of this bylaw. There's a couple of housekeeping amendments relating to clarifying the minimum size for subdivision purposes and types of dwelling allowed in R4 and R4A, which are the rural residential lots. And in, in looking at the minimum lot size, the staff actually realized that it was more than a housekeeping issue because the, the small minimum lot size for having, if you had both water and sewer or, or water and sewer but not both, were virtually identical and were also quite small. They were, you know, really a small lot size and so that we wanted to propose actually increasing from 1,300 or I believe it was 1,400 square meters was the minimum to 5,000 square meters where there is community water but not sewer and one hectare where there's no community water or water system. So the one hectare is the same, it's just over 10,000 square meters right now and then 5,000 square meters where there's water but not sewer. And this helps prevent the proliferation of small lots across the rural residential zones and that of course includes down in the flood plain on Johnson Flats where there's in the past been some subdivisions that created quite small parcels and...
This is about horny information, sorry to interrupt. This isn't on our agenda package, right?
It is. So this, this is, this isn't on the agenda package and actually it's, this is basically what was identified in the last week as being able to be presented for council today and then it goes to the public hearing next week and then as draft for the third reading. So this just needs to be recognized before the public hearing. Yeah. So it's, yeah, this is the, so if I can just proceed with the other part of here, there was a mistake in how we had written the initial, the mobile home piece and so we just need to grapple with, we had made it seem that you could have three or four dwellings on a R4 lot. So, so we're still working on the changes, but the idea is in compliance with the Agricultural Land Commission regulations, you can have a house and you can also have a mobile home and as long as it's your family that's in that mobile home, so we need to make sure that's recognized in the zoning bylaw. We're still working on getting this wording exactly right, but we just wanted to make note that we'll have, have this ready for next week for the public hearing. So that's both in 42.4, 42.5 and 43.4, 43.5. That's the R4 and R4As zones respectively. We'll get to the other one in a moment.
Can we do a couple of questions?
And yeah, just a question on that. Do you, do you still, would you still need to change the zoning bylaw if, say for example, we do something, a temporary use permit for, for people needing to get back with their properties and wanting to live in a mobile home?
Your worship, absolutely. We'd still need to go through the zoning bylaw piece. A temporary use permit would be something that would, you know, they'd have to move it after three years essentially or renew. An alternative to, to doing that is basically enabling this, this clause, I'll just write it up on the screen, zoom in a little bit. Enabling this clause and have a schedule to remove it after a couple of years if, if it's the desire of the community to, to not. But really the newer mobile homes are, you know, they're virtually identical to modular, they're two-by-six constructible, you know, they're just, they're a little hard to repair if they've been flood damaged, I understand, but as long as they're up to the correct flood construction level, which is the subject of the other memo there, as long as they're up to the correct flood construction level, they'd be a totally appropriate dwelling type and because there's inventory available now, having this change in the zoning bylaw would enable those lots to be able to redevelop more quickly.
Councillor Thompson, Councillor Buck.
Okay, so just forgive me, I'm a little confused here. So what is the rationale for these changes that are embedded in this particular document? And what's the title of this document that you're showing us here? Oh, sorry, what? Oh, I'm on, okay. That's my first question, just for clarity so I can...
Okay, through the mayor. So this is bylaw 2930, 2039-1, which was introduced in April, it was introduced this spring and brought for first and second reading on April 23rd. The public hearing is happening on June 18th and we'll be coming back to counseling for third reading on the 25th. So any suggested or identified amendments to the zoning bylaw that could be captured either as housekeeping or actual changes to the bylaw would need to be done at this stage in advance of the public hearing before third reading of the bylaw. So the intent of the C and D were to clarify, though it hasn't entirely been done yet, but to clarify the minimum size for subdivision purposes and type of dwelling units allowed on R4, rural residential lots, the way that it was worded in the previous version of the zoning bylaw and actually coming from, coming from the previous, the previous bylaw in fact for 42.4 and 43.4, it needed some clarification. So we're working on, you know, flagging that we wanted to have a slightly larger minimum lot size on the rural residential areas and then clarify that the types of dwellings allowed. The second piece that we're adding here was adding the section 21.2 and relating to mobile homes may be placed on R1, single, two-family, and R2, small lot residential zones of land south of Kenilver and then our local and south of Rocco neighborhoods. of land south of Kenilver and then our buckle and south of Rocco Leavitts. And so this had been raised as a discussion point by people after the flood. And it was identified at one of the community meetings last week as something that people would like to have discussed for this element.
So I'm the caller. So that's where I was confused because, so when I was preparing for today's meeting and reading and I opened this document and it says cannabis production and detail overlay amendment. Okay, this isn't in our agenda package. Right, right. And so, yeah, I just feel like, now I feel like I'm reading an omnibus bill where things are embedded in something and gets lost. And what you're talking about is so important right now. And I'm just wondering, like, how we're segueing into something so important to do flood relief housing and it's coming up in the cameras. Like, you know, I'm talking about an omnibus bill.
Okay, our deputy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the agenda item that you have in front of you was basically put, the deadline for the agenda was Thursday a week ago, so about 10 days ago was the deadline for staff to submit. We knew we had to do some changes. These particular changes were finished as far as I know 15 minutes ago.
Sure.
While we're still having some feedback come in from the community meetings. So we knew this was important stuff that's going to come and we needed to have this discussion. This was just the only way to get it into a meeting, to have a good discussion at the committee of the whole level. To, and we had it in the agenda item at the very bottom. We said there will be some items coming and we just didn't have them a week and a half ago. Graham just got out of the EOC on Thursday and was working on some other briefing notes on Friday that had to be handed in. So this was finished 15 minutes ago while the other sessions were going on.
All right.
Let's just say that I must commend you for it.
Yeah, it's fantastic. It's just like, you know, we're putting our heads around it.
We just had these town meetings last week and we're Monday morning. Excellent job. Thank you.
It's embedded in the correct...
Our CAO.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that staff gets all stars all around here. They've been twisting and turning, trying to get these pieces of information out so we can start this piece and basically fast-track something that I think is very important to council, very important to the community. So they're just doing their due diligence to try and get everything in and as good as they can for now because it's the consideration before we actually go to actually implement this in after the public hearings.
Kudos to Mr. Watt. And you're on EOC also. Good job.
Yeah, one more thing, Mr. Mayor. So like if we wouldn't have brought this forward right now, we would have to go through the public hearing for just the cannabis amendment and then start this whole process all over again. While we're at second reading right now only, so this is doable at this point. It wouldn't be doable in a week from now.
What's the title of the public hearing?
I'll go to the Gazette app. I mean, the title of the public hearing is, I'll just open this up.
It's just cannabis.
It did include modular housing.
Or did it? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, because that's the thing is that people who aren't interested in cannabis might not come, but people who are interested in housing, we need to make sure that they're captured.
Okay, so that's a good question. Yeah, but just a step, would this also include like RVs, like people who are wanting to put their RVs on their property until they can rebuild?
We can speak to that without, it wouldn't be going through this bylaw. It's normal process to allow while someone is working on, you know, repairs on their home too for a temporary use to be able to have an RV on their lot. And in discussions with staff so far, we've identified that for flood-affected properties, it's a reasonable interim solution. Of course, until winter, it's not free to live in an RV in winter. But if there's just a few months of repairs that need to be done to these properties or while people are looking at the alternative, it's something that would be basically enabled.
Do they need a permit for that?
As long as there's an open building permit or repairs happening on the property, they wouldn't need a permit.
Thank you.
We will email this out to council here after the morning meeting, so I hope you guys can all look at it.
And obviously the same will apply to rebuilds, especially if it's a rebuild in the form of a modular or even a stick build because should they choose to live in their mobile. Okay, Counselor Butler, and then we have, I've been waiting very patient.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for clarifying that about the motor homes or trailers that could be used because I think that's something that's more cost-effective for people right now. They're already financially strapped and to be able to just put a trailer on their property without any hassle from the city would be extremely helpful. I'd just like to know, is that mentioned in the zoning bylaw about mobile or trailers? Is that, whereabouts is that mentioned? There's nothing specific in the bylaw regarding RVs while folks are building. We wouldn't have them hooked up to water and sewer and electrical because that sort of invites wintertime RVing. And we know it's not safe for folks to live in the RVs here around. It's, there's load issues and other issues because they're not built for that. But yeah, as long as there's an open building permit and, you know, usually the neighbors are pretty, pretty much okay with it. We don't have anything specific in the bylaw, but we'd hope that we won't have to put anything in there.
So it's a form of a prohibitive measure which will be incorporated once a building permit is taken. Counselor Butler.
Perfect, thank you, Worship Kate, for the Gazette. So just for clarity, these changes to the zoning bylaw are happening because prior to the flooding, changes to the zoning bylaw were already underway to deal with cannabis. And now staff is reacting to feedback from public meetings, so they're adding some changes to the zoning bylaw. Normally that process takes quite a long time, so we're kind of piggybacking? Is that what's happening?
Accelerating into a period, that's why they're saying it's standard practice.
This is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, so it wasn't, I mean, we were doing the cannabis anyways, but it is just a zoning bylaw amendment, so it is a good time for us to bring forward. We knew there were other housekeeping issues that we had to deal with. We thought we would have time to deal with them separately, but with the flooding, we've realized that in order to speed things along and keep up on, toward on with our schedule, which we lost over a month with the flooding, that we can do these all at the same time. So it is the zoning bylaw amendment that we are doing, not a cannabis bylaw amendment, but it is a zoning bylaw amendment.
Because it does state zoning bylaw?
Yeah, it is, it's not unusual to do zoning bylaw amendments in, I mean, I should sort of call it an omnibus, but it's not unusual to identify changes to a zoning bylaw and implement them once a year or twice a year or something like that. That's standard practice.
Multitasking, great.
Thank you.
Counselor Trippin and the gentleman back.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So then it'd be my understanding, I guess, that staff would be, and I guess that would be David Bruce's department, would be fast-tracking those building permits for the people in those areas who are needing to get in to rebuild?
My understanding is he's working as fast as he can and we're trying to get some assistance for him to help out with that. And, you know, he can only do things so fast and make sure they're done right, so he'll do the best he can, I'm sure.
Gentleman to back and then Counselor Butler.
Les Johnson, JFTV. Just for clarification for people who kind of pay some attention. Is the discussions you've been having and studies you've been doing on tiny houses and increasing rentals and stuff like that, is that informing this? Is that part of this?
Through the mayor, absolutely. It's, I think it, it was staff's initial take on the zoning bylaw that it needed some updating, modernizing. There's some old ideas in there. And having a greater range of flexibility, especially with regards to secondary dwelling units, you know, laneway houses, that's actually going to be really useful in the flood recovery as people look at maybe an alternative place to build or have a, you know, bring in a tiny house or that kind of thing. So we did have in mind the notion of opening up zoning bylaw for, you know, more flexibility. And I think this is a right in line with what you're saying.
Yeah, so just to further what Counselor Tripp was saying about building permits being fast-tracked is that we know there are people that are ready to start rebuilding. They've been asking us about that. The next memo coming up here is about increasing the height for building in the floodplain. People that are applying now for rebuilds, is that going to be put on hold, their building permits, until we finalize what the new building heights are going to be? The purpose of, we've got a surveyor out surveying, what we did was he documented some high water levels where we could confirm with photos and other evidence that that was the high watermark. And we tried to find areas in, spread out throughout the city. So this is going to be an interim flood construction level until we get our full-on floodplain risk assessment completed and our floodplain, our new floodplain mapping. So this would be documented high water levels plus a pre-board. And that would be the new flood construction level in the interim until we have the full study completed.
Is there any contingency on the province in regarding this?
For flood construction levels and such? Not that I'm aware of. Are you, Graham?
But, Mr. Mayor, my question actually was in the interim, before we officially establish those flood levels, the next month and a half, if somebody applies for a building permit, they're still going under the old flood levels?
They can if they choose to. You know, we are working on this and we wouldn't recommend it. But yeah, until we have something in place, they can, they certainly can.
So then, for the most part, except in some areas where water backup came, you know, can basically push the water levels higher. A lot of homes that were built to the current flood construction levels, you know, the water flowed around them. In some cases, water was backing up and got higher than that. And so we need to essentially know that future construction is going to be safe. But if a home requires a substantial reconstruction or greater than 75% of the value above the foundation, they would need to be compliant with all of the current bylaws, including the floodplain bylaw. So this is already something that would have applied to the major reconstructions if that's what's required.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. So my concern would be for those people who, and I'm understanding that a number of people had basements that were flooded. So the main portion of their home, the upper portion of their home, wouldn't have sustained any damage, but the basement would have sustained, you know, quite a lot of damage and possibly up to beyond that four-foot mark, which would mean taking out all the drywall the whole way up, is my understanding. I don't know, I'm assuming that wouldn't be up to 75% of the value of the home. So they would still be able to, I'm seeing, you know, I'm near here. Okay, so I've got the answer to my question, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I am a little bit concerned like Counselor Ross here, and maybe she got her questions satisfactorily answered. But because we have the two very important issues here, they're really totally separate from each other. And I know we've been spending a lot of time talking about the building requirements and the change to the zoning bylaw concerning that. And that's very important and I absolutely believe that that, you know, has required our attention. But I do have some comments to make about the cannabis open house and public hearing. We were told that the people were going to get extended public engagement, that was in April. And I certainly am pointing no fingers, laying no blame. We've had a catastrophic event here in the community that has really changed staff's ability to address many of the ongoing issues that were in the works. But I just feel, I'm concerned that due to the fact that so many people's lives have really just been turned upside down with this whole flood event, that the quick turnaround on the cannabis open house is maybe not going to give people the time that they need to express their views. The Canadian Health Minister, Jeanette Taylor, has said that Bill C45, which was passed on, I think it was June the 7th or the 8th, will need to go back to the Senate for amendments and that it will take at least another eight to 12 weeks for the provinces to get full legalization in place. So I do think that we do have some time here. I would be in favor of giving people in our community at least another round. The staff are saying that they want to bring this back by the end of June. And I would request that we give that until the next meeting in July. That would give people just another few weeks to be able to get in, to make their wishes known. This is a very significant issue that impacts our entire community. And I really do believe that we should be giving people the opportunity to express their views on the cannabis zoning issue here. And so I would, I won't be actually, and that's the issue, that's the problem that I have here because I definitely want to vote in favor and be in favor of anything that's happening concerning speeding up the zoning for the land. But I'm having issues with the cannabis side of this.
Through the mayor, thank you. It's a really good question. So normally when there's zoning bylaw amendments with different components, council could vote to resolve to proceed with an amendment, a change to the amendment by third reading that just brought forward certain parts. So after hearing information back from the open house and public hearing, you know, council could certainly resolve to have further public hearings on an item or to extend the public hearing on the item to hold, you know, the, council could basically move that part of it to a separate bylaw. It would basically kick it back to, I believe, second reading is how that would go. It would kick that part back to second reading and the, yeah, maybe.
So yes, Mr. Ross was right that, you know, council could essentially say that they would be able to have this piece with this bylaw amendment and it would be moved out. At that point in time, we still haven't done the third reading because they've taken it out and then you can carry on with the other pieces and then it becomes third reading. So that's council's chance to be able to have that pulled out of the bylaw. Just have to really be cognizant though that if we want to get these other things in place, that that is still part of this amendment bylaw. And so if council finds that, you know, it's being incredibly important, of course, that that could essentially be done. But it is council's choice.
Would it just follow up on that?
Counselor Thompson first, please. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Worship. With respect to, I mean, I appreciate what Counselor Tripp's concerns are, but this isn't anything new. We've been discussing this for several months now. And quite frankly, I have not heard any opposition to this bylaw. People who are concerned about it have had ample time to express their concerns to any member of council. And they will also have that opportunity at the public hearing. So I can't see any reason not to continue with what our staff have planned. They're building a bylaw amendments and I think it's timely. I understood that the Senate had passed the legislation in Ottawa last week and that it is going to be going ahead. And so I can't see any reason to delay or to stall the procedure on this bylaw.
Counselor Tripp, do you want to speak to first?
Yes, thank you. I was just concerned that those issues in here that deal with the land zoning, would they have been considered gone through first and second reading? I'm just not sure because we're trying to push them into third. Is that not act correct?
Part of the process, Worship, is the fact that we have the wherewithal to be able to add changes to that bylaw on the first and second because those are the ones, and this is like the discussion here right now. So we have total wherewithal to input different sections as long as council has got the information and as long as it's happening before the public hearing. So there is total wherewithal to do that now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I did receive a text over the weekend, I won't say the person's name, just for privacy. They live in Belmar and I'll just read the small portion that she wrote. "I have a huge concern about the legal growing cannabis in urban areas since I'm quite allergic to ragwigs and the spals under that category. I live in Belmar and I did hear during one council meeting that there's a possibility of a commercial grow off within city limits. I'm strongly opposed to this as the odors would walk over to residential areas and those skunky odors would not be pleasant. The reason I say skunky is my nephew in Ontario has a medicinal marijuana prescription and my sister makes him..."
in Ontario has a medicinal marijuana prescription, and my sister makes him store and use his pot in the garage, which, by the way, now smells like skunk. Not pleasant, I can assure you." So there are people out there in areas surrounding the light industrial where we've zoned for commercial grow-ups that are, you know, quite close to that area that have concerns about smell.
That's the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the first one I've gotten, too, but.
And more reason for probably a public hearing?
Yeah.
To lead us into potential third reading, so we should get the public hearing?
Yeah, that was my only concern with this designation, was that it was.
Rather than amended at this stage of the game. Counselor Hammitt?
Yeah, just wanted some clarification on the, the bylaw portion of 58.4, the front face of a building and any signage may be no less than 50 feet from a controlled highway. So are we talking Highway 3, or is it, is that any roadway?
Old highway is Highway 3, and, and the intent is that, and some, as some other municipalities have done, is basically not having a quarter of cannabis stores along the highway, and basically placing them back. The intent of this was to have a discussion around what is the appearance the council wishes to have from the highway. There may be other ways of, of doing it, you know, in terms of visibility of not having the front access or facing the highway and not having signage visible from the highway.
Right.
And I think we'll be looking forward to public input at the open house and hearing about how this would affect different businesses and properties.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, we've been talking about this since, well, the last federal election. It was a major platform for locals. They got in, and this is what they're doing. They said they were doing, they're doing this. We've been talking about it for a long time. And I find it, in this community, when people are passionate about something, they speak up. We have never received so many letters as counselors as to when we were looking at the, the wildlife range, the, the firing range. We received more letters than we've ever received on any issue was around the renewal of the lease for the, for the range. So I'm just thinking, if people were really passionate about, you know, the amendments or the bylaws that we have around cannabis, we would have heard from them, and we really have. I think giving them more time isn't going to give us more results even come to the open house. One of the concerns I have is going to the meetings in North Ruckle, South Ruckle, particularly North and South Ruckle, particularly South Ruckle, is people are in need of accommodation now. And I'm a little concerned, but waiting till June 18th, that what can we do as a city? Because people have access to oral fifth wheels and trailers. They want to move back onto their properties, where they can start cleaning up and stop living. I've talked to families with children who are living in tents. I talked to families who are living in, parents, like, oh, there's four kids and mom and dad, living in a bedroom in a basement in a house. And they're like, if we have access to a trailer, we need to be able to put on our land so we can live in a penalty as a family again, and start to be built. I'd like to see that happen today. So what can we do now?
They can with fifth wheels.
Pardon?
Fifth wheels can.
They can.
Yeah. Just not mobile homes, not, you know, trailers. But you can put a fifth wheel motor home.
RVs is the destination, RV, an RV viewer.
They are, okay. Okay, because I was told that, okay.
As long as it's a building, apply for it.
Well, they haven't. They, they haven't done that. There's no, that's the thing, is they haven't done that.
So they can leniency put in there.
That's what I'm saying. Like, there's a young guy at the meeting, he said, you know, can you turn a blind eye? And then he said, well, we don't, never turn a blind eye. And that's just, I think we can articulate it in a different way.
Yeah, exactly. The wording has to be.
So can we do something, I'd like to see something to come out of today's meeting where people can, while they're sorting it out and they're waiting for the answers that we're waiting for, that they can move into these mobile homes or fifth wheels, whatever they need to.
Are those?
Yeah.
That's all needs, are you?
Possibly we could have more discussion into some.
But they haven't decided.
Yeah, they did. They did.
What was, what was the final decision on that?
Of course not.
That they are allowed, yeah. I'm not hearing the final announcement.
There's nothing stopping people from having an RV on their lot. Like I said, we wouldn't hook them up to water and sewer or electrical, but there's nothing stopping people from storing an RV on their lot, whether they're, because we have people that have RVs on their lot that have family visiting, and they stay in their RVs for a week at a time or whatever. Our bylaw is complaint-driven, and we're not going to be out there, we're not sending Bud out chasing around, looking for people with RVs in their lot, and any more than we send Bud out just to look for trouble. So it's complaint-driven, and we understand that this is a different situation. We don't have any language in our bylaws speaking, saying you can't have an RV on your lot. So it's, it's a special circumstance, and of course, we're, we're not going to make people wait until they have a building permit or such, because there's nothing stopping them from having.
I understood that, but they're going to be using their RVs as a new permit and a present for a while.
Well, again, it's complaint-driven, correct? Right now, there's nothing existent in a bylaw that states you can't do that unless the neighbor complains. So, and who's going to complain? And then the complaint has to be taken very seriously, what the reasoning is why the neighbor would not want an individual putting his RV on that particular lot. So, yeah, well, I don't think that a lot. Okay, any others?
So I would like to follow the recommendation of our CAO, Dan Heimrich, by pulling out the cannabis retail overlay portion of this zoning amendment and voting on that if we're receiving for information or whatever we're doing. I just don't want to be seen, because I'm going to have to vote no for this, and I certainly don't want the media saying that I voted no for the zoning change.
Your worship, just to be clear, it wasn't removal today. We still have to follow
the public hearing process, and so the open house is scheduled for the 18th of June, and then the public hearing. And so at that point, when the third reading comes up, a majority of council, if they choose, could take and have that removed before they get that third reading.
Absolutely. Okay, having said that, I'm going to call the question.
There is no, there's just a memo. Actually, Your Worship, there is a recommendation.
Yeah.
We're attached to this.
Yeah.
It's because council doesn't have related, it's locked in there, so we have. Oh, this is on our agenda?
Yes.
Oh, it's up on the title?
Okay, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Could we?
Seems it's two motions.
There's actually two motions. The first, first one with regard to the zoning and taking it to the third reading, and I believe it was Counselor Thompson that made the motion. So that's the one that council's going to be voting on first.
So that one?
Memorandum for Department of Engineering Services, where you have this on.
Right.
Yeah, that's the one. That's the recording on, so.
Okay.
So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Tripp, Counselor Butler are opposed. What's your carries?
No, only the second.
Second, the second.
We asked staff to, to vote to, to buy off third reading. And that's the, the housing rate.
Yeah, because this motion only included what was included on our agenda, the extra things that staff has added today, I believe, would require that second motion. So.
See, Your Worship, this is all one motion, isn't it?
This is all one motion. This is all one motion.
And now council's going to be considering this one?
Yes. We are on.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the, the entire motion is, the first part is simply to accept the report or receive the report for information, memorandum from staff, which is basically the one pager that you had in front of you. The additional changes is just part that we're, because council, in theory, the committee of the whole cannot direct staff to do anything. So that's why it's written in a simple way to say, please, staff, include those changes when you're doing the public hearing. So we didn't have to go to an email meeting.
So 6A, as I read it, is inclusive of those two items as one motion.
One is the report, just.
No, you want two motions. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, 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 no. We're, we're, we're a bit the way we are. I just called the question on the whole thing.
It would definitely say from us, like, we would, that, the committee of the whole. So if I, if we would have written the motion, the second part is that, the committee of the whole asks staff. Council can break up this into two motions, but the way it's written, we weren't intending to.
No, that's fine. If it's all one motion, I'm with that.
The and further makes it.
Yeah, inclusive and part of it, exactly. So we're done on that. 6A is done. We're moving on to 6B. We've already voted on. 6B is a memorandum proposed amendment to the floodplain management bylaw number 1402/1756, interim construction elevations in the floodplain from Development and Engineering Services. The recommendation is that the committee of the whole receives the memorandum from Development and Engineering Services on the proposed amendment to the floodplain management bylaw number 1402/1756, interim construction elevations in the floodplain file 09-4150 for information. Hoover, please. Counselor Hammitt? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So Carrie, 6C, monthly highlight reports from the department managers. Recommendation is the committee of the whole receives a monthly highlight reports from the department managers. May I have a vote? Counselor Ross, discussion. Counselor Butler?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just wondering if staff could elaborate on, especially the fire chief. I mean, the amount of rescues that they did during the flood is amazing. And I think it's important for the community to hear and to recognize the good work that was done, and any details that they're allowed to give on those rescues, I'd love to hear about. Maybe as a past lifeguard to you, it's, I find it interesting. Also, with development and engineering, it said that they met with the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure about the highway signs. I was wondering if we could get a bit more information on that. And also, if there's any information that there, I know we've had discussions with staff about damage that was done to city infrastructure and buildings that are home of the city, and if there's any information that staff is able to release to the public on that, it would be great.
So three things.
Systematically, by law, to our fire chief.
Okay, first thing on the rescues. I can't elaborate a lot on that, obviously. The rescues were pretty much all over the valley, not just in city limits. And it was not only Grant Fork Fire Rescue, but Grant Fork SAR. And there was, there was actually one other SAR team, and I'm not even sure where they're from, that was local, that was working with, with a boat. And they were doing some of the rural, some of the more rural rescues as well. Trail Regional came over, their rescue team was here as well, and they did some rescues as well. So in, in total, it was, it was the number of rescues.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, approximately thirty-five rescues. Yeah, and that started, actually started, and our crew did, I think, four rescues on the Wednesday night, ourselves before the other teams came in. So it's actually started Wednesday, as, as the waters started really coming up.
Did that include animal rescues?
Yeah, no, did not include animal rescues. No, yeah. Okay, is that answer free?
Ah, yeah. Thank you for that. I mean, that's amazing. That's a lot of work to do.
Yeah, and I mean, the crews did a really, really good job.
Yeah, and stressful.
Stressful, and they were, you know, I mean, we were being pulled every which direction with a number of different rescues. As a matter of fact, we had a grass fire right in the middle of everything that we sent crews and fire trucks to, as well. And also on the Thursday, we had to move out of our fire hall because our fire hall flooded. So the crew had to move everything, all our equipment out and up to one of our other halls. So pretty busy, and just, you know, nothing but accolades to the crew. And, and the other neighboring crews, I gave us a hand. That was a really, really good job.
Ministry of Transportation about the highway signs?
So I met with the ministry about the review on the signs on the highway for businesses and other attractions. So they are starting, they had the, the department that does signs across the province who came in. So they are pitching some ideas on the signs to the local Ministry of Transportation officials and to the city. So it'll be three parties working on it. And they will be still within that kind of blue and white theme that the ministry has. But they are going to try, well, we'll see when, what works out when they're up there. But they were mentioning that they were going to try something a little bit different for us and see if it works, looking at the different needs of rural communities and how they can kind of meet those a little bit differently than they have in the past. So we'll know more as it evolves, but right now, that was the preliminary meeting.
Any idea when that's coming back to council?
Until I see something, I won't know when. But, I mean, it does, it's not a quick process. I, I don't anticipate anything coming back before the fall.
Counselor Tripp?
Yeah, the third question was about damage to city infrastructure and buildings. If staff can comment on that?
If you did, if you did enter it, just because we don't have Kevin here answering questions, if I may, you're okay with that? Yeah, just so the old expo sign that's out there, I don't know, is there any updated information that you might be able to provide on that?
We had scheduled work to happen for the middle of May, which obviously didn't happen. So that work is still going to happen, and it'll be the same as was mentioned before. The sign will be dropped out. The vegetation there will be replaced with a flag, and we'll be getting new letters. But as to timing on that, it's kind of back to the drawing board in terms of scheduling.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more on that. The flags that are on the expo sign are getting pretty worn, as well as our flags downtown at Jivo Park. Has there been anything discussed about those?
Uh, no, but certainly we can replace those, yeah, as far as patients.
I have one quick question.
Oh, the city infrastructure was a third.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Mr. Gates?
So the obvious spots were damaged in the city, as you know, this, which are and industrial, a station, and some of the trails. One of the less obvious pieces is quite a few sinkholes have opened up in our roadways in some of the children. So that will be repaired. And then in terms of re-creeping costs, there's two different streams. One is through our insurance provider, and the other is through the disaster financial assistance. So we have an application in for DFA, and our insurance jesters have been open. I'd say they've been excellent, really supportive of, of us as we look at things like City Park. And, yeah, so in terms of overall cost, we'll know until we actually see the bills. One of the major costs in removing things is whenever you have asbestos or lead in buildings, in order to remediate them, remove things like drywall or insulation, that only adds to the cost of doing that. And so in some of the buildings, that has been either just waiting for tests to come back or actual remediation process, and that has driven the cost up. But fortunately for our buildings, our insurance provider is covering that.
I have a question under Corporate Services, a general concept here. I know I'm so adamant about timing of these type of questions right now because of the situation we're in, but because it intertwines to a degree regarding the looting and that that's going on, where are we with the second-hand dealers and pawnbrokers by law?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, not much has happened since we spoke last on this. It was a little flood event, so.
Don't tell me you steal our bylaw.
No, it's, it's still in the progress, and hopefully we can tackle this here over the summer and get it through all the processes. But this flooding event wasn't helpful. Basically, staff was gone out of the office, and there was three managers left in city hall to do the job of the rest that was called out. Yeah, we tried to keep it running, but I haven't touched it since we last spoke.
Yeah, no, I understand completely. It's just it would have a little bit more impact helping the RCMP and others, where it is a little bit of, let's say, force out there that's not so readily able to get rid of the merchandise. Okay. Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Tripp.
Just a couple of questions. Excuse me, I haven't been by there, but has the former whispers of Hope Building been demolished yet? No. I'm hearing from at least one concerned citizen about the camps set up. the camps set up in Central Park. And I'm wondering, I, I have no doubts that that's been being dealt with, but I keep getting pictures of after the cleanup, this is what's happening now. So I just wondered if anybody had any comment, maybe through you, Your Worship to our bylaw enforcement officer?
Morning, Mr. Alcock.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm through you. The camp situation around the city has not moved over a period of time. There have been several camps that moved, abandoned camps, removed from the Whispers of Hope area. There is one active camp on the north side of it, who is a gentleman that's in a wheelchair because he lost part of both speed through Gay Green. Being somewhat lenient with him because he is, virtually has no place to go. He's been staying at the Whispers area for about two years now. There's another camp behind Whispers that I have moved on and moved on again and moved on again, and it's never ending. This weekend, there were four abandoned camps. One of them was burnt out. Four of them were removed this weekend by themselves. And they're living on the truck right now. So it's very interesting. But there are about six, six or seven active camps within city right now.
Let me just make a comment. I'm gonna go on record on this one. Based on our bylaw officer, it's come to my attention that have been some very disrespectful comments made in regards to our bylaw officer, and I would just ask the public that even though their perception may not be what they feel it is, I think respect towards our staff and especially our bylaw officer is very, very necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, perfect. And my question on that, thank you, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Alcock. On the camp situation, are you seeing the migration of any of these camps, or are they setting up in different places now that the river may not be the place it was last summer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The large camp that we had on the riverbank last year behind Whispers area or South Whispers area has not started to kind of develop this year. We do have more camps up on the Granby, on Granby Road, heading towards the dump. We also have one up in the Moto area, and there's also a couple of by, by extra booths. Those ones were abandoned and removed this weekend. There has been some migration of some of our transient people. Some of them have moved on to Nelson. Some of it, there also have been some new ones come in because the restoration companies are hiring people out of Penn, Dickton, and Suyes and so on, and as a result, getting more, some more transient fly permission to have no place to live. I don't know what they're doing. I've not been able to find out, but we do have extra people in town that wouldn't normally be.
Counselor Tripp, then Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad, and this question would be to our CFO. And the question would be that I know that council had dealt with some issues to provide anian seed for those flood-affected properties and downtown businesses with regard to the utilities. And now that we have the tax notices sent out, I just wondered if there had been any discussion or if anything was going on to see if there might be any relief given to people who will be needing to pay their taxes as of July 1st?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, one of the first things I did was actually contact the ministry with respect to property taxes, but unfortunately, they're, they're legislated, and the, and council does not have the authority to waive penalties or waive interest or pretty much do anything to help in that respect.
Yeah, this is regarding the policing in Grand Forks, and I know that during the actual response phase, we had thirty extra police members from various communities here in Grand Forks assisting, and it was, it was a really big help. The downtown businesses really appreciated their presence was, was seen and recognized throughout the entire city, and it helped to dissuade some of those that would want to walk away with something that didn't belong to them. I'm just wondering what our status, what are, what are our CMP situations now? What percentage are we working at? And are we any closer to getting, working at a hundred percent?
In actuality, I'm meaning to get in contact with Jim Fenske, our staff sergeant here, and I'd like to find out if there's any possibility because we are still, now we are in, no longer in response mode, in recovery mode, but still the state of emergency is still active. If we can somehow get more of these individuals back here because of some of the situations, I will be discussing that with him and his superiors as soon as he's back. I don't know if he's back in the hall or is he back here? Because otherwise, I will just be talking to either Dan Holpey or one of the other officials from out of Nelson. Because when they had these units in, and I've talked to some of them, and they were actually not regular, they were tactical units, so specializing their field, which was a great asset to this community by busting some drug places, and very, very good. So I'd like to have a few more here to prepare for that, but will we be able to get it? No guarantees.
Well, and, you know, having that much presence in town was really good. We have three of the problem people that were in camps on the street and creating problems are now incarcerated in Alberta. And so it was really good to have that extension and police so that we're recognizing the problem for what it was.
Absolutely. Recognizing. I don't know who was first at this point in time, but Lady from Kate.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Your Worship. Just through you to Dale Harriet. Do you have an idea of how many volunteer hours we put in, say, during the month of May in response to the flooding by your members?
As a matter of fact, I haven't had even a chance to do any calculations. Basically, kind of got done with the EOC stuff a week ago Friday, and then I was off to a conference, so I'll try and put something together.
Yeah, if that's enough, we could take it. That just gets really valuable for people understanding that the response was volunteer-driven.
Yes.
And so it'd just be interesting.
Just, just on that, I mean, even when we flooded, we had our crew on the road, because I was unaware of it. Were manned that our whole twenty-four hours a day to keep the pumps going, to keep the water down. And I was not even aware at that time. I know I was kind of busy doing some other stuff, but, but that was something they did on the road. So it hasn't been much. Just that kind of thing is pretty easy.
Go ahead, Les.
Okay. Yeah, as I was listening to Bud talk about the situation with homeless people, I was reminded what one of the residents of Ruckle, who turned me through one of the houses, pointed out, and that's this. Next year, he's gonna have a much bigger dimension on his job because you're gonna have abandoned properties. There are properties in Ruckle that people are gonna walk away from, and they will be literally abandoned. And as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't touch those properties until they haven't paid their taxes for three years. Am I right? Is that correct? Okay, so what's gonna happen to those places is those people who are camping out by the river are gonna squat in them. That's exactly what happens everywhere. You have large tracts of abandoned houses. And his, first off, the bad worry about that is there'll be a fire in this squad, and then it'll just catch the next squad. And he lives on the street and is probably gonna have a couple of abandoned houses on it. There'll be pepper all over Ruckle. Does the city have, is the city planning on trying to deal with that in some way? Asking for special dispensation from the provincial government to be able to do something about those properties before they have to go for three years as squats? I mean, I understand it's a completely new and unique situation for the city, and I can't imagine that you would have even had any forethought on this. Who would have? But it's something he's gonna be facing next spring. Because those houses that can't be lived in now, that can't be repaired because there's no money and insurance has walked away, and the DFA isn't gonna help them, they are literally gonna sit there empty. And that's asking for squatters.
Your comment on unique situation was actually echoed by the province, too. This is something completely unique in BC for the province itself, not for the province of Alberta, but the province of BC, very unique. It's a learning curve for them, too.
And if you have that many abandoned properties, guess what happens to the property values for people to try to sell them? Like, as he pointed out, in Detroit, you can buy a whole block of houses for five grand because nobody wants them. They, nobody wants the liability because it costs money to knock them down. That's just, I just wanted to bring that up.
Very complicated. Counselor Tripp.
If I, if I may, just, just to add a little bit of comment to that, because I, I know we've been, and I'm sure everybody has been down around there and seen that there still are many homes that haven't even been touched.
Yep.
I mean, they're just, they, and you can actually see the black mold on the windows and.
Well, part of that is, so to add to this, but part of the complication is that is, to add is that early in the emergency, IHA said to people after they had been carded with not a green card, don't go into the buildings. And at the public meeting that you had here, there was one guy in his coveralls who'd been ferociously working to try and save his property, and I know the property, it's really expensive, and I applaud him for that. But right next to him in the next row, there was an older gentleman who told, who said, "They tell me I can't go in." I know that Lauren's property has been sitting there for a month, closed up. And those little brown bins for the kitchen diversion stuff, we stopped using those because if you close them up after three days, they're covered in a white fuzzy stuff. Like, I can't imagine what the inside of her house and a whole bunch of other properties look like right now. They'll have to be completely gutted.
And if I, if I may, if I may just add what I was gonna say, is that we do have a recovery manager who's on staff, I guess, or coming on.
Steve Newt.
Steve Newt, Your Worship, he's not our staff.
Not our staff.
He's going to be basically the recovery load to the EOC.
Through the EOC.
And it'll be basically, I wouldn't know if we call it co-managed, but it's going to be an entity that's covered by the province. And from a CEO's perspective, Mr. Anderson from the RD and myself are kind of the head where the recovery managers go to place, and then they start putting that piece together. So it's gonna be like a quasi sublet of government, I guess.
Like a contracted, sort of like, but anyway, my point there is, is that this recovery manager, we've been asking that he would compile, or we've been suggesting, I guess, and I'm sure this will get funneled through to him, and I know they have great practices in how they address these situations in flooded areas because this has certainly happened in other cities, right? But so then making sure that every single property is inventoried and that all of the mitigation processes are kept track of. So, because right now, we don't even know how many homes are in the situation that we're talking about, and we really need to get a handle on that. And as soon as possible, so that we can be proactive and know what we're dealing with in terms of finding some creative solutions for some of these issues that are, I mean, that none of us ever would have dreamed of. Or upon us.
Some interesting comments quickly, Les, that I'd like to comment on that you mentioned about people abandoning and leaving. Here's another concept which complicates the issue more. You've got a lot of renters. Now, if that scenario plays in that they abandon their buildings due to whatever, DFA funding isn't sufficient to rebuild or so on. So now we've got this complication of all the renters now looking for a place to rent.
Exactly.
So it gets, it gets bigger and bigger. This is why we're on a long road here.
Well, I got two more things, man. I'll let the fire chief.
Can I just clarify the placard thing a little bit? So the yellow placards said, the reason for the yellow placards was you need to have electrician come in, do an inspection sign out the year. And then you also need, if you have gas, you need a gas waiter to come in and clarify all that, and then they'll turn on your power, they'll turn on the gas.
Yeah.
The red placard does not say you can't go in, though. What it says is you cannot occupy them.
Right.
Okay, so you can go in, but you can't live in there, right? The reason for the red placards was because structurally, they were deemed by a building inspector to have possibly, some kind of possible structural malfunction.
Right.
So they needed an assessment by an engineer with regards to that. It did not say that you cannot.
No, I, I understand that.
It says you cannot occupy.
I, I do understand that.
Great clarification. Thank you for that.
I do understand that, but anecdotally, people said that they were told by the IHA, not by that placard, but by the IHA, they couldn't go in there. And at one of the public meetings, I think the first one in North Ruckle, the IHA admitted that. They did. It's on, it's on record, right? So.
And that's unfortunate.
It's a mistake, unfortunately. The other two things I wanted to point out was, was if you need a little bit of extra incentive to do something about this, think about the potential for somebody who's homeless that squats in there and hurts themselves. And then I know of at least one lawyer who loves to do pro bono work attacking this thing. I'm sure it wouldn't be hard for them to find somebody else, because if it's abandoned and it's on, it's within the city limits, it's probably the liability lies with the taxpayers. That's the first thing. And the other is crazy idea solution. I wasn't gonna throw this out there, but I mentioned it to Mr. Watt at the end of the second meeting. And if you have to knock your small rental property down in Ruckle, and you're worried about what happens two, three years down the road with the floods again, why not put in a small houseboat with Hardpoint and Monterey? So, no, no, I'm kidding, not kidding. So when the flood happens, it just floats up, and then it comes right back down where it should be, and you can take it out and do Pleasure Craft stuff once you're in the first of July. But, you know, anyways.
I believe we have the comment from our mother.
Can I just comment on the homeless thing? On the weekend, we responded to a fire out on a field out by Bryson Place. It was quarter two in the morning, and we responded out there to a grass fire. For us in the fire service, really, really concerning because it's another month down the road, we probably have to evacuate Bryson Place. Right? And we're just lucky it was at quarter two in the morning, and it's in the first week of June. I can't even imagine because the homeless people are not very not considered, but not, not very careful when it comes to their fires and everything else. And what I do understand is, I believe it was a tent, they caught fire, and they had to jump out of the tent, which caught the grass on fire, blah, 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 right? But I can't imagine moving forward, and we've been dealing with this, and I've been a council a bunch of times now with regards to us putting out their fires, and it's a matter of time. Someone's gonna get burned out. If we don't do something about this, someone's gonna get burned out. And it's gonna be, you know, I'm assuming homeowner that, you know, and we're homeowners, right, that are getting burned out. We need to get a grasp of this whole situation. And just moving forward, if we go into vacant homes and that kind of stuff, you can board them up all you want. We've boarded homes up, and homeless people just go and rip them, rip the boards down and, right, and it'll actually demolish them. We're gonna have nothing but problems. We're already probably gonna have some problems as it is, and just, that's just gonna add to it, right?
But some of those ones near Bryson Place, that's private property, right?
Yeah.
This is why, this is why I've mentioned numerous times that we should have a bylaw that makes the owner of the property responsible to maintain his property.
But it doesn't, it wouldn't have mattered. It wouldn't have mattered if he cut it down. If it's another month later, it's gonna run.
Well, cut it again.
It's, it's gonna run, right? You need to water. You need to water. If you don't water, it just all goes dry, and it's just gonna burn. Doesn't matter how short you have it. I've seen fires like grass that high, and they'll run like crazy. Right? You need to water, and it's gotten green, or it's not gonna burn.
So what's the solution, in your opinion?
Well, no, I mean, the, to put a bylaw in with regards to vacant property, and the city has a lot, right, that, as well, and so the city would have to have some kind of as well. There's more to it than just cutting the grass. If you cut it and just lay it there, you just, it's just a bunch of fuel. Right? And it's year after year after year, it just gets worse.
So that's how you manage it?
I don't know the solution. The immediate solution is with regards to these homeless people that are doing this. That's, I mean, if they're not out there, they don't have a problem with that, right? And I mean, it's not that. An empty field doesn't catch on fire by some. Well, I mean, it's along the river, it was up, it was on the way up to the Wildlife Hall.
Plow it up. Instead of put a tent on flat, on flat ground, just plow it up. We'll burn it. Turn it over.
Yeah, but how can you put it on a private property? That's another thing.
Right?
I mean, yeah. Policy that, so we're talking private property.
Private property.
Yeah, that's where the complication is.
It was under a tree.
Very, very agree. To our CAO, my apologies.
Your Worship, just a response to Mr. Johnson speaking about if somebody's squatting in a person's property and they hurt themselves. It's, it's not the.
in a person's property and he hurt himself, it's not the city that bears the liability because it is private property.
That's true. I was going to say that too.
It's true.
We can't... But just, like, last November, I think it was, we went to a structure fire that was up by Culture Road that was homeless people, right, that burned down a whole building and a camper and all that, so it's not just ants. It's not just long grass. They're, you know, they're just, they do what they do, and they're not careful. We don't get a handle on that.
Yeah, take a look around, the realization comes real fast.
I would just, I understand it, it would be private property, but as the previous CAO said about the city being dragged into that wrongful death lawsuit to do with Cascade, if they can see your city from where it happened, you're involved in a suit. So if you have an abandoned property within the city that the city has not done anything with, and the owner has walked away for a year or two, yeah, the owner would definitely be dragged into court in the lawsuit, but I can easily imagine that the plaintiffs would want to drag the city into it too. Whether or not that would stand, I can see them wanting to drag the city.
If we had that bylaw in place to maintain a property, then possibly, but without that bylaw in place, I think it would be a very, a long stretch to even go there. Counselor Butler.
Who's got deeper pockets? That's what the lawyer would be thinking.
I see your point, Les. They just have to put you on there, doesn't matter if it's relevant or not, you're still going anyway, son. When we had the meeting in South Ruckle, there was a resident there that asked if he could come and help bulldoze this place, remember? He was cutting it apart with a saw, and he wanted to, we could just take it back, go in there and help him out, and we can't. But I'm just wondering if staff has, we keep talking about provincial funding and DFA, but what have we heard from the federal government? I know you've been talking with Richard Canning, S.R.M.P., about different things, but we haven't had any federal response yet as far as...
Would have to come from the province to request.
The request was to come for the province, because it would be nice if we could get some sort of federal funding for people to be able to demolish their buildings if necessary because, yeah, we don't want those staffs.
One of the provincial representatives at the other meeting was also into the federal end of it, and we were briefly talking on that area, but it has to be a provincial request.
Bringing the army back, they can practice demolition.
There you go. Good.
It's a facetious comment.
Again, has to be with approval because it is private property, and the liability's there. All right. All those in favor receiving the reports? Anyone opposed? Carrie? All right, we move on to, I would say, can't remember the term yet. Questions from the public. Go ahead, Kate.
Yes, thank you, your worship. To you, possibly through to CAO, the most people can answer the question, but at the public meetings on Friday, it was mentioned, I think, by the RDKV's communications person that the city had hired a communications consultant. So kind of a two-parter, I guess, is what's the status on that communications consultant? And furthermore, I mean, how does the city get pulled into, or what is the staffing going to look like as we go forward with this recovery? Are there going to be some staff impacts there?
I'm going to put that one right to staff. That's operational.
Yeah. Okay, so the first part, yes, the city has contracted a communications person, that the main person is not going to be here on the ground. She has a lot of experience in crisis communication. She teaches at the Justice Institute, and fortunately, she herself couldn't be able to make it on a short time, but she is working with Francis over at the RD, and we also have a girl that has just come into town now that's working in Concert River, and her name is April.
And I believe she's perfect.
And so she is going to be working and helping the city out in getting some communication strategies across and a little bit more controlled messaging, so we'll be seeing some pieces on the city's behalf, and we still are working in concert with the RD. We just felt it was important that the city obtain their own piece on that to be able to get the messages across and build the case to be done.
And I know everybody out there likes that word, controlled messaging.
I know, yeah, that one twigs on my mind.
Unfortunately, that's the way it is.
And then the second part of the question about... So the second part, a little hard to talk about right now. There are some things in place. We're going to be having a meeting fairly shortly with the recovery group with Mr. Newt and also the RD to look at what an org chart would look like for recovery as we move on. And so there's going to be a bit of discussion as to who would be on that team that may involve some staff numbers, we're not sure yet. It's something that's still bear some conversation, but there is something that works. And of course, at that point in time, then we would have to require some backfill for our staff at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to thank you all for, I certainly wouldn't want your jobs. You're amazing, and thank you for, Mayor Conrad, for talking about the learning curve also. And so I want to thank you all for taking me through kindergarten today, and this has been my first, was my first time in attempting to do a presentation of sorts, and I have a lot to learn, and I really appreciate all of your help in that way, and definitely could use your mentorship and probably lessons with the Digital or Danielle or, and Kate, I'm sorry, I missed your presentation at the library about a month or so ago because I really could have used some of your help there too. So I just wanted to please say though that I neglected to acknowledge, on the back page of the presentation, there was a sustainability model that J.J. Verigien provided for us, and so I just wanted to acknowledge him for sharing the model and his commitment to our community as well. And also just to address the musical multiple intelligence, I have the old format, not the record, but the CD of Susan Aglukart, it's also on that last page, Song of the Land is an amazing, an amazing musical representation and summation, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Just so you know that I won't be here for the public meeting, I will be able to record your live broadcast out of the other town, so, sorry about that.
You won't be here?
I won't be here for the public meeting next Monday, so people listening or whatever...
On the 18th?
The 18th, yeah. I'll have to be out of town. Pre-existing commitment...
The one at the high school, I think?
No, I'll be here for the high school one, but the one, the public meeting you're going to have here.
Public hearing regarding cannabis and the bylaw. Thank you, Les. All right, unless there's any other questions, may I have a motion to adjourn, Counselor Ross? All those in favor? Meeting's adjourned.